Good evening, welcome to Canyon City Planning Commission Meeting Wednesday, September 25th, 2019. I call this meeting to order. Would you please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Hi Denise, will you please call roll?
Good evening, I sure will. Chairman Maloney?
Here.
Commissioner Clark?
Here.
Commissioner Clement?
Here.
Commissioner Ledoux? Commissioner Shagley?
Here.
Commissioner Brandon Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Randy Smith?
Here.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, we need to have an approval of the minutes from the July 24th, 2019 Planning Commission. Can I have a motion in a second, please, or are there any discussion about the minutes from that month?
Is this from the previous meeting?
Not? Right, we did not have a meeting last month because of the quorum, so this is from July 24th Planning Commission. So, did anyone have any corrections on that, on those minutes?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we accept the meeting minutes as presented.
Okay.
Second?
Second. Denise, please call roll.
Commissioner Clark?
Aye.
Commissioner Brandon Smith?
Aye.
Chairman Maloney?
Aye.
Commissioner Clement?
Aye.
Commissioner Led-- oh, sorry. Commissioner Shagley?
Yes.
And Commissioner Randy Smith?
Aye.
Okay. Before we get to the public hearing, welcome DeeDee Clement to your first Planning Commission meeting.
Thank you.
Is that right? Or Patrick, were you gonna do that? I don't know.
I'm glad you did it.
Okay. Okay, so at least we have almost a full house up here again. Okay, item 4A. Public hearing, special review use, school in R2 medium-density residential zone, case number SRU 2019-002. This is continued from July 24th. I now open this public hearing. The provisions of the city municipal code and in particular Title 17 thereof, the subdivision regulations and the comprehensive plan of the city of Canyon City are incorporated into the record of the hearing as of set forth verbatim. Can we please have a staff report?
Certainly. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. Tonight we are here hearing the matter of the special use review approval, or SRU, for the Canyon City Middle School at 1215 Main Street. The request is for approval to operate a school in an R2 medium-density residential zone district. The subject property is located at the northeast corner of Main Street and North 12th Street. It exists as an assemblage of various lots over time and therefore has no unified legal description. The property itself consists of 12.3 acres and comprises not only the middle school campus and assortment of five different buildings constructed over time, it also contains the school athletic and recreational fields as well as the school district's administrative offices. The oldest of the buildings on site dates back to 1925 in its construction, and while it may seem odd that the school district is coming forward to seek approval of a special review use to operate a school district this location, when there's been one here for just short of 100 years, the reason has to do with several planned improvements happening to the school campus and the funding mechanism the school district has opted to employ. Work has already begun on-site towards this project. Demolition of certain structures has commenced and construction of new facilities in pursuit of an improved design and layout on-site will begin later this year. Now, under Colorado revised statutes, school districts are exempted from obtaining land use approvals through local governments. This is because any potential school district can overlay multiple local government jurisdictions, both municipalities and counties, and complying with the various regulations in every local government could become very involved and confusing. Thus, the school district is not required under state law to obtain an SRU approval. The reason the school district is requesting this approval is that a portion of the funding for this project is coming through a Building Excellent Schools Today, or BEST, grant. The Colorado agency that is issuing this grant has specified that the recipient must show that they are in compliance with local land use regulations in order to receive the funds. The underlying property has an R2 medium-density residential zoning. Under the requirements for R2, schools of any sort from elementary all the way up to colleges and universities must obtain an SRU approval through the city. The applicant has therefore furnished staff with concept plans for the reconfigured school campus. Now, in addition to the site plan concepts, the school district has submitted a subdivision exemption plat for this property, which is being administratively processed, with the intent of unifying the balance of the middle school onto one lot of legal record and splitting off the school district's administrative offices onto a separate lot. Two structures which are currently situated on-site will remain: the existing gymnasium and the historic original school building. New construction will consist of additional classroom space and a guest entrance which will connect the two preserved historic buildings. Parking will be separated by function. A bus loading and unloading area will access the site and establish a wait lane off North 12th Street. In addition, a parent drop-off and pickup lane will be accommodated in a new lot which takes its access off of Main Street. The balance of the site will continue to be used for athletic and recreational activity fields. And finally, under the related subdivision exemption, the administrative offices at the northwest corner of Main Street and 14th Street will be platted off onto a separate lot. Section 17.24.030A specifies three criteria for the evaluation of special use review requests. This is used in context with the purpose statement for SRU applications as stated in section 17.24.020, to minimize conflicts and land use between permitted uses in a zone district and those uses which have characteristics which could negatively impact those permitted uses. Staff's analysis of the six evaluative conditions associated with SRU applications as specified in section 17.24.030B reveals that 94 years of established precedent has indicated the use of this property as a school district does not create long-term negative impacts to the surrounding neighborhoods. Accordingly, staff finds that the three criteria specified in section 17.24.030A have been satisfied and the SRU can be considered for approval. Staff therefore recommends that Planning Commission cite the four findings of fact specified in section six of the staff report as a certification of the city's jurisdiction to act on the middle school special use review request and conduct a public hearing. Staff also recommends that the Planning Commission recommend that City Council approve the Canyon City Middle School special review use request. This would conclude the staff presentation. We do have representatives from the school district and their consultants here to answer any questions you may have. As always, I'm happy to answer any questions Planning Commission may have of staff.
Thank you. We'll start with any questions for staff.
Patrick, I had a question. I'm not sure if you-- it's not really a zoning question, it's more regarding the school itself and just wondering, like, will the student-- number of students increase with the size of the school? Do you know that?
That would be a better question to put to the applicant. We have not been informed of an increased enrollment that this replacement facility would generate.
Mm-hmm, okay.
That was actually gonna be my question, thank you very much.
Okay, well, we'll defer to the applicants. Welcome. State your name and your association.
I'm Chuck Jordan with RLH Engineering, the owner's rep on the school construction projects.
Jeff Peterschmidt, Canyon City Schools.
George Welsh, Superintendent Canyon City.
And to answer your question, there's not a planned increase of students at this facility?
So, if we're planning-- I'm sorry, Randy Smith. If we're planning on hopefully a population increase with Canyon City, shouldn't we kind of plan on an increase with the middle school population as well? You said there's additional classroom space, but is there additional classrooms to accommodate more kids coming into our community?
Yeah, so, in the overall plan for the school district in these, you know, there's another project, Washington Elementary, and we have actually a total of seven regular public schools and one charter school in the district right now. This particular facility in the past served as a high school and was once rated at a capacity of 800 students, which created a, obviously, maintenance and upkeep issues, including the heating and cooling issues with that. The Building Excellent Schools Today grant process for which is paying for, like, 83 percent, I'm sorry, 73 percent of this facility requires that you right-size it, that you can't actually build for anticipated growth. However, with a-- our current population has been running around 400 in Canyon City Middle School. Its capacity will be 425, maybe even a little bit more. Harrison K8 School on the northeast side of town is running under capacity currently, and so any additional middle school students who come in for the near future anyway would be well-suited to fit in there. We have the capacity there to run over 400 students in the middle school, and we're only running, I believe, like, 320 right now. So, there is room for middle school students to expand in the future in the school district. And then at the elementary level, we have ample space still at McKinley Elementary to fill those areas. And Canyon City High School at one time, Jeff might have a better answer, but I think ran-- we run about 1,100 students right now. At one time, I'm pretty sure there was close to 1,400 on the campus, and there's still capacity there.
There was one of the provisions, I guess, the section 17.4.020 basically said that we want to avoid undue congestion of population. So, that was my big concern, is can we accommodate more students? And I know we're gonna spread them out, but I want to make sure that this area right in here, we're not gonna, I guess, have that undue population congestion around the school, and that would include traffic and things like that. Is there gonna be a staff increase as well?
No. Once again, as right now, we're running 400, maybe 404 students. The capacity is up to 425, which wouldn't even require more staff. And actually, in terms of congestion, I hope the planners, the folks in the department agree that actually having off-street parking and off-street bus drop-off and such is going to, I think, make that corner, that section of town much easier to navigate because we'll be able to get people off the street.
Yes, I'm Paula Shagley. I just want to compliment you for looking into the future with the safety for the children, with the way that the bus loop is going to work and get the kids from being on Main Street so much for pickup running across. So, I'm so excited about that aspect of this. Thank you.
We view that as a partnership with the city, by the way. They did a great job getting a Safe Routes to School grant to help support some of the curb and gutter and the sidewalks and such here, so that's been a wonderful process, and we appreciate it too.
I also just want to say I appreciate the fact that you're keeping the face, the old-school face. Just a lot of heritage there and stuff, so thank you.
If you don't mind me commenting on that, I wish we knew that would be the best route forward when we brought the question to the public, because we figured we might have passed it by more than 75 votes. But what we do appreciate is the trust that the public gave us to move forward with this. And then, working with the Building Excellent Schools Today grant program, they flat-out looked us in the eye and said, you know, "We think this town needs this facility here, and if you can create a plan that would keep the 1925 structure." And we are keeping that whole structure, but inside it'll look brand-new. In fact, we just saw some potential finishes for inside that we're pretty excited to share with the community pretty soon. So, that was kind of a team process, too.
I have one more question for Adam, who's not here. So, I guess I'll go to Patrick. It concerns basically the water service. It said the parcel had five water taps at one time, but now we're down to the four. Will those four water taps be adequate for the renovation?
Yes, yep. So, obviously, a new fire line's been brought in. There's been a new main line brought in for the main part of the building. We'll have a two-inch off of that from inside the building to take care of irrigation. And then we have another two-inch that we did to take care of the irrigation of the fields as well. And then we already had a tap on Greenwood that we kept over there and just upsized it so we can take care of all the fields.
And the fire hydrants, they say they're-- we're okay with those, but it says in the future shall be private hydrants installed. Who maintains the private fire hydrant?
So, private hydrants, if we had private hydrants, that would be on us. We have to have those flowed by-- we use Johnson Controls, who does it, Simplex, you might remember that name. We have to have them once a year come in and flow those meters, and we have to turn all of our stuff into the city, of course, just like their back flows.
Plenty of safety issues. As far as utilities, they've all got to be buried underground. I like that part. No mention electricity. Do we have to do anything with electricity lines? Are they all in place?
Yeah, those are all in place already. In fact, we just did that. It's been about three weeks ago, but that's all underground now.
Okay.
Coming off of 12th Street, comes into the west side of the building there in the 25 section.
Okay.
If you're old enough to remember where the old economics room was, that's our whole mechanical room now.
Oh, okay, okay.
Right off of that downstairs caf-- what used to be the downstairs-- well, it still is the downstairs cafeteria, but won't be soon.
One more minor thing. I'm assuming it's all high-tech. We're gonna have plenty of Wi-Fi and Bluetooth and everything else in there, so just in case the kids have tablets.
Which is what we just went to this year.
Yeah.
The middle's called our Chromebooks now.
Yeah, okay.
Going to that, so yeah. It's the infrastructure for the wireless and all that stuff was definitely beefed up. We had to.
Yeah, I still remember Big Chief notebooks and pencils. All right, thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for the applicants? Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Any further questions for staff? Does anyone in the audience have any questions? Okay, I now close this public hearing. Any further discussion among the commissioners? We're good?
Okay.
Now, I'll call for a motion in a second based on the findings of fact. You'll see those on page six of seven of the presentation, if you'd like. We don't need to read all the findings of fact. Patrick Gordon, do you prefer we do?
I don't think you need to read the findings of fact. You can simply cite them as findings of fact, numbers one through four.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we moved to adopt the four findings of fact regarding the proposed special review use of the Canyon City Middle School at 1215 Main Street. Those findings being one through four as listed on pages six and seven.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Denise, please call roll.
Commissioner Clark?
Aye.
Commissioner Brandon Smith?
Aye.
Chairman Maloney?
Aye.
Commissioner Shagley?
Aye.
Commissioner Randy Smith?
Aye.
Okay, now I need a motion--
Commissioner Clement.
I'm sorry.
Aye.
I'm missing somebody.
That's all right.
We don't usually have this many people here.
I know.
Okay. I need a motion in a second, please, to recommend the approval of the City Council.
Mr. Chairman, I move the Planning Commission recommend that City Council approve the special review use for Canyon City Middle School at 1215 Main Street.
Thank you.
My second.
Okay, we have a second. Denise, please call roll.
Okay. Commissioner Brandon Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Shagley?
Aye.
Chairman Maloney?
Aye.
Commissioner Clark?
Aye.
Commissioner Clement?
Aye.
And Commissioner Randy Smith?
Aye.
Okay, we're all set on that one. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Okay, item 4B, minor subdivision, Scholastica Minor Subdivision, case number SUB19-014. Now open this public hearing. The provisions of the city municipal code and in particular Title 17 thereof, the subdivision regulations and the comprehensive plan of the city of Canyon City are incorporated into the record of the hearing as of set forth verbatim. Mr. Malready, can we have a staff report?
Certainly. Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission, our second public hearing this evening concerns a request to subdivide the property located at 615 Pike Avenue under the name Scholastica Minor Subdivision. The subject property is a 7.41 acre parcel located at the northeast corner of North Sixth Street and Pike Avenue. The property is known within Canyon City as the St. Scholastica Campus, a private parochial school which had an all-female student enrollment. There are multiple buildings on site which date to different periods. The oldest is known as Big Red and was constructed in 1897. The maintenance building was finished in 1950 and the existing dormitory building opened in 1961. The principal classroom building was finished in 1970, and the final addition to the site was the library and chapel building, which opened in 1983. The site operated as a school until 2003, and in 2005, the site was again opened as a juvenile detention facility, but was shut down after only 18 months of operation. Since 2007, the site has stood vacant and unmaintained, and this period of lack of maintenance has taken its toll on a number of the buildings on site, some of which have already been demolished. Planning Commission members may recall that earlier this summer, a rezoning application came before you to create the Scholastica Plan Development District. We believe the rezoning will be finalized and recorded within the next few weeks. The subdivision request was processed under the zoning created with the Scholastica PDD in anticipation of its recordation. The applicant has proposed to not only subdivide the property based upon the planning areas within the PDD approval, but the final configuration of lots anticipated in the full PDD itself. This means that in Planning Area 1, the single-family residential portion of the site, the proposed subdivision will create 13 lots with vehicular access coming from a privately-owned and-maintained alley. All 13 lots come with approval under zoning to have both principal dwelling units and accessory dwelling units should future owners of the lots seek to construct both. This has the potential for 26 dwelling units on 13 lots, or, given an average lot size of 6,476 square feet, a density of approximately 13 dwelling units per acre. Lot sizes within this planning area range from a high of 7,650 square feet to a low of 5,900 square feet. The larger lots all face north and front Floral Avenue. The smaller lots face south and orient their fronts to a common area contained in Planning Area 2. To provide pedestrian access for all the lots fronting Floral Avenue, the applicant has proposed to create a tract which will contain a trail link between the private alley and the common area to the south. All of this is consistent with the PDD zoning. Planning Area 2 represents the non-residential portion of the Scholastica PDD. The largest portion of this planning area is a tract intended to be privately-owned and maintained by an owners' association and used as a neighborhood park. This tract is approximately 3.15 acres in area. The applicant proposes to create three lots around existing buildings within Planning Area 2, specifically around the classroom building, the chapel library building, and the historic Big Red building. These commercial office lots will range in size from 16,594 square feet to 36,668 square feet. Access to the commercial lots will come from either North Sixth Street or North Seventh Street, depending on which street the lot in question fronts. Parking will also be met on-site, which will require approval of a separately-submitted site plan. All of the lots within-- and tracks within Planning Area 2 are consistent with the PDD zoning. Planning Area 3 represents the multifamily residential portion of the Scholastica PDD. It includes the largest existing building on the Scholastica site, the original dormitory. The applicant proposes to plat this entire planning area into one large lot. At 2.11 acres, it will be the single-largest platified lot within the Scholastica subdivision, although the community park is a larger tract. The applicant's intention to subdivide the interior space within the dormitory into 43 condominium units. This will involve both a subdivision exemption to create the condominium units and a site plan to provide off-street parking. Because of the overall size of the dormitory building, fire access to the north side of the building will require the inclusion of a fire lane. The applicant will establish a fire lane easement along the northern boundary of this lot. This fire lane is not intended for use by the general public, although, depending on where the trash enclosure facilities for the dormitory building end up being located, trash collection vehicles may use this lane as well. The proposed Planning Area 3 is consistent with the PDD zoning. In terms of this subdivision proposal, staff finds that of the seven prerequisites and 19 review criteria established in section 4.10 of the city's subdivision development regulations, the Scholastica Minor Subdivision meets these in principle. However, as members of the Planning Commission will note from the referral comments and red lines included in your agenda packet, there are corrections that the applicant needs to make before this subdivision can be formally reported. Section 4.5 of those same subdivision and development regulations indicate that a property that is fewer than 10 acres qualifies for the abbreviated Minor Subdivision approval process. At 7.41 acres, the Scholastica property qualifies for this. And finally, in terms of the ability to construct on the three lots, staff finds that all of these lots have, or will have once the horizontal construction process is completed, adequate access for vehicles, fire apparatus, water, sanitary sewer, and all dry utilities such as electricity and natural gas. Therefore, concerning the Minor Subdivision request, staff recommends that the Planning Commission cite the three findings of fact contained in the staff report as certification of Canyon City's jurisdiction to act on the requested subdivision of the Scholastica property at 615 Pike Avenue, and, staff recommends that Planning Commission recommend City Council approve the Scholastica Minor Subdivision request, subject to the five conditions contained in staff's report. Finally, staff recommends that Planning Commission recommend that City Council approve the resolution authorizing a limited exception to the city's development standards in regards to the requirement for development agreement. That would conclude the staff's presentation. As always, I am happy to answer any questions the Planning Commission may have. Present to speak on behalf of this project is the applicant, Mr. Phil Lund of Homes of the Canyon LLC, and his consultant, Lester Lamone of P3 Communities.
Okay, thank you. Let's start with questions for Patrick. Does anyone have questions of staff based on this presentation? Okay, Mr. Hammer.
Hi, Patrick. The-- so, my question is, the-- I'd like to say that I have-- the companies that I've worked for in the past have been highly-regulated entities and have had to submit plans and various documents to regulatory agencies for review. And one of the worst nightmares we got in was when a PhD English major was the reviewer of the plans. And the-- what ended up happening is we were changing that to which and back again, you know, and so the-- my question is that the city has indicated that there are certain things that have to be done, and that's basically contained in the September 13th letter?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and so here's my question for staff. Are all of those true requirements, or are some of those things that are nice to have? For example, and I can give you an example. For example, we're talking about the font of particular nomenclature on different sheets. And so, the, you know, from my viewpoint, that seems like something that's nice to have rather than a requirement. So, this is just-- it's not really a question, but perhaps a suggestion, that in future reviews, if there are things that make the application better and stronger, that they should be listed in a non-mandatory section, but that for sure, the mandatory requirements should be separate so that there's a clear view of what has to be done and what is nice to do. Thank you.
Any other questions of staff? Before we get too far, Patrick, we don't have the printed findings of fact in our packets, so we can get through all our questions. In the meantime, would the applicants like to come up and have anything to say? I know we've seen you before.
You have seen me before, on July the 24th, 25th, whatever that was, a few--
You have seen me before, on July the 24th, 25th, whatever that was, a few months ago, and we appreciate you passing the zoning part of it, and we are pleased to be here tonight to finish up the subdivision process, at least with the Planning Commission. So, that is a big deal for us and something that we're quite frankly excited about. So, I have documents that you don't have, but soon Patrick is going to have digitally. So, Patrick, this is the completion for the zoning part of it, and then that would be the August 5th letter, and so, we're ready to go on that. And then I have a document that also deals with the rest of it. So, the things that the councilman was speaking of, we had the September 20th subdivision letter as well, and I am happy to hand you over. And I'm going to make a ground here, because this is something our staff has worked really hard on, and I know you have, but I think that includes both the Planning Commission as far as zoning as well as the subdivision process. We have told City Council, of course, to finish up, do it fine. There's something there. But our staff has just worked hard in all weekend, and I know we're made a fast track to get here on September 25th as opposed to October. There was some movement on that, and we appreciate it very much. And I have to tell you, our staff, our team has been working very hard also, and we wanted to make it so that on this evening, when we got before the Planning Commission, that as far as we know, all the checklist that the staff had put out is done and it sits on that hard drive. And that includes documents also from our attorney, dealing with the associations, the three associations that are there, and then how they blend together. All those documents are on there as well. So, so the development guide, just to mention what it was required, the development guide, the drainage report, which is over 100 pages for a seven and a half acre parcel, we put together, of course, the PDD zoning I mentioned, all the engineering documents are in there, all the grading documents are in there, and all the declarations are in there. So, it's a very substantial amount of work that we put together, and, you know, it costs a fair amount of money, but we're there. The thing that I want to talk about also is, this is extremely helpful to us from a strategy standpoint, because every meeting I've attended, I've always told the strategy. My background is dealing with condominiums and doing a condo conversion, and I'm also done sit on planning commissions, et cetera, but I, so I've viewed it that I'm going to lead this PDD subdivision process, but I really want to focus on that condo, and so we've always viewed it that, once we get the subdivision passed, we're going to sell off part of these properties. So, we have someone who is already interested in the lots along Floral. We have another party that is interested in the lots now along the Green Zone. We have a party that's interested in the chapel area, building there. We have one that's interested in the historic building, and quite frankly, we're working with others that you would recognize their names of in town to do something to make that historical building work. And we also have somebody that's specifically interested in the classroom building. And from, again, I just want you to understand the strategy, which is to get them in, and the development guide puts the rules in place that they have to stay within the boundaries that you have adopted and we have adopted, and yet we bring additional resources and additional investment. And the whole plan is to build this up all at the same time, as opposed to sequence it out over three or four years and put traffic on the roads, all that during that time, et cetera. If we get various people coming in, various companies coming in, we can build this out all at once. So, that's the plan, and I'm excited that getting this passed tonight is absolutely going to help with that strategy. So, the other piece that I just want to mention, and I'll conclude, because I told you the story last time, is just how practical this is. We're talking about, you know, a lot of legalese here, and, you know, we have to comply, of course, with state statutes, ordinances, everything else, but this all has just a very practical issue of getting investments into here and people putting their dollars in. And I have to tell you, I've been approached by a number of people who are Canyon City residents that want to invest in the condos. We have a formula for some of that. I prefer not to go out and get a loan, so we're doing some strategies with people investing for 7,200 square feet out of the 23,500 square feet of liberal space that is there, and they are ready to do that. And so, again, all the legalese, all the formalities that we're doing, it's extremely practical that we get people to invest as a result of what's happening tonight and what's happening with the City Council. And so, we keep those dollars in Canyon City, as opposed to those people taking those dollars and putting them in some other place. And that is just something that makes me excited about Canyon City and what we're doing here. Again, the legalese becomes something very practical. That's all I've got to say. If anybody has questions.
Any questions from the Commission? Counsel?
Just, just because I knew, I just had, as I was reading everything, a couple of questions was, one was the ADU units.
Yes.
And Patrick was reading that those are something that's going to be built after the property is purchased by the owners. So, I'm just, if I understood correctly, so I'm curious, is there like a standard that the ADU units need to look like, or potentially?
Yeah, there is.
Go ahead.
Excuse me, there is for both houses and the ADUs, and the ADUs is totally an optional issue, just gives them flexibility that they can put one in if they so choose. If they don't want to, they don't have to. And with any of these, my interest is keeping broad fences that give the property owners in the future, or the condo owners in the future, the ability to govern their own affairs. And so, again, that means I want to put an ADU for my mother-in-law, or somebody said the other day, for my millennial that's staying home. And for the condo association, it gives them the ability to do what they want, those 43 condo owners to govern their own affairs.
Okay. I was just wondering if it could actually be 13 different kinds of ADU units there?
Well, the good thing is I've got Lester right here, and he is totally up on that. Lester, you want to comment on that particular issue?
Yes. You should know that in the development guide, everything that gets built on-site has to conform to the development guide. We've worked very closely with City Staff to make sure that what we have written in the development guide conforms with the city's ordinances concerning ADUs. So, we're not going smaller or larger than the city's ordinances, say, today. And in terms of aesthetic, we do have an aesthetic that all of the residential units are going to comply with in terms of size and material and shape and those kinds of things, and they're all listed in the development guide.
Okay.
And also character of the community. We want houses that fit into that environment there, as opposed to something that looks completely different than what's there.
Right, thank you. Yep. And then the last question I had was, the business section, the green section, it talks about vertical parking on the streets. And so, I'm just curious, the number of parking spots, has that been identified yet?
Yeah, we went back and forth with Adam quite a few times on that, as far as exactly how that would be structured, and do you remember the exact number that we had there?
I don't, but you keep talking and I'll count.
Okay. So, it's common area, both for the historic building and also the chapel building, that we've got a name for that that's coming up in the future as well, they'll be named. But it's also just common area public, parking, because it's out into the street, it goes out there, and so if you're parallel parking along the rest of the campus up in, you know, the north end, and then you hit that, those vehicles should be about the same as far as where they're at into the street. And have you got them counted?
Eighteen.
Eighteen.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. Good questions.
Yes, I have a question, and it kind of doesn't relate to what we're looking at right now, but when you were talking about going to do all these phases at one time in construction and stuff, what type of provisions have you made for all this equipment and stuff that's going to be utilized, and where's it going to be parked at?
Each one of the planning areas will be basically housing their own equipment, so I'm going to be focusing on the condos and putting in parking space. We're going to keep it on our area. The chapel building doesn't need a lot of work, and I'm happy to give tours of this campus for anybody who wants to come and see it. So, we're not talking about extreme amount there. The historic building, again, I don't think we're talking about much. The only one that really needs equipment is going to be the parking area for the classroom building, which is this lot over here. We'll put that in there, and that's going to be contained, and the exit is going to come out on Sixth Street. Thank you, Patrick. And then the other one is lots, and again, we've got one developer who is going to be doing the six, is what the plan is, and then another developer perhaps doing the seven, and they're going to contain their equipment. So, you know, with, using the existing buildings, I'm thinking about your question, you know, as going through, because we haven't thought about that specifically, but using these existing buildings, it's what the neighborhood is used to, and it's really just taking them and putting new investment into them and making them 21st century usable, as opposed to the year that they were built. And I just don't perceive that we're going to have a lot of heavy equipment on there. So, we had, you know, a fair amount of equipment on with the demolition, and it didn't seem to be a problem. We had a couple hydro hose and, you know, lots of trucks, et cetera, and it's a seven and a half acre parcel, so there's room to maneuver and make some things happen, and I don't see, foresee it going out into the streets and being a big burden for the community at all.
Okay, thank you.
We'll work closely with that to make sure that that isn't the case.
Okay, Phil?
Yes, sir.
I would just like to encourage my fellow commissioners to go on a tour as I did. It alleviated so many questions and concerns that I had, and it built up such excitement and enthusiasm in myself. I am personally impressed, let me just tell you. This is, this is an amazing, huge project that you are just tackling with much integrity, and it's going to be such a boon for Canyon City. I do have a question about good old Big Red, the historic building. So, at this point, it rather looks like maybe in the future you might have some answer for salvaging it?
Yes. So, the plan is to make the historic building survive, and I am happy to give a tour. I've been giving lots of tours, I gave another tour today to anybody who wants to go through it. And as Paula was there, I showed her the foundation that's on the north side, and if you're walking down the sidewalk, you can see the sag that would be on the north and east side of the building that's there. It's not significant, it's probably one or two inches that they're there, but it's there, and it goes all the way to the top. That foundation, from a structural engineering standpoint, structural engineering giving us our opinion, has to be replaced, and if we fix that north side, we've got to fix all of the foundation. The estimate for that is about a half million dollars. And thankfully, where it works is the square footage of that building is 15,400, and as a result, if you do the math, if we figure $2 million for the whole investment to get that up, it still works from a per-square-footage basis per dollar going in there. If it was a much smaller building and we were dealing with $2 million, it wouldn't work, but there's a lot of square footage in this building, and so it has the opportunity of actually surviving. And I am working in coordination with a name that, again, you would recognize if I mentioned it, but we don't have, I don't have his permission or their permission to state what that is, but we're trying to work hand in hand on another major project in town to make some things work. And you guys are all intelligent people, and you probably can put two and two together there, but nonetheless, that's what we're trying to do. And there's another party from Denver that's showing interest in it as well. And again, I've had my hands tied, not significantly, but without a lot, I can't get to a purchase agreement. So, what you're doing tonight allows for that lot to be there, and I can get a purchase agreement, and once the City Council passes it, we're talking about somebody stepping in in late October and making that deal take place, which is only a month away. So, we're excited about that happening.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Happy to answer.
Mr. Hammer?
I do have a question. It's kind of a process question. Included in our packet is a six-page development improvement agreement, and you have, you have reviewed that, and you're, you're satisfied with that agreement?
Actually, I've reviewed that, and I'm not satisfied with that agreement, but that's what Patrick, his number three item was, that you're going to consider a resolution which basically makes it so that that development agreement is waived. And I've talked to the city administrator on occasion, and specifically last Friday, we dealt with that specific provision that was in there. And again, we have come to the agreement that, on behalf of this particular project, that there would be an exemption. Now, Patrick wants to speak to it, but just speaking from the development standpoint, the original agreement was pretty onerous for us, and it didn't give us any flexibility, and it took a lot of authority away, including the checkbook, to some degree, and so, there was discussion about that. And so, I think there is a resolution that's in your packet that is hopefully going to be passed here. I'm in favor of it 100 percent, and then it goes on to the City Council, which will waive that development agreement requirement. Patrick?
Yes, I was just going to say, after the, subsequent to the Planning Commission agenda being built and disseminated, I was informed that the city attorney said that this resolution needed to have Planning Commission vote on a recommendation to forward to Council along with the project itself. So, I sent that out as a separate email to all of you. If you do not have it, I'll be happy to go upstairs and print a copy of it for you, but that was a separate email apart from the actual packet.
And let me say, with the development agreement, the first one was onerous, but it is our intent to follow the ordinances of the city of Canyon City. It is our intent to make sure that this project is safe, it deals with the health issues, and to make sure, again, the ordinances are there. It just simply handcuffed us to a significant degree on some other things, and so that's where, in coordination with the city administrator, and I know the council had some information about it as well, we came up with the position that this was a better way to handle this particular project.
I have a question, might be a little premature, but pertaining to the condominiums, or is there going to be any, is the association going to limit the number of investors versus owner-occupied units? Is, are you going to have it? You probably haven't thought about that yet.
No, I have thought about that. That's a good question. Thank you, sir. So, there are some regulations dealing with the banks, so if you're going to purchase a condo, they like, most of them, to have it 50 percent ownership that would be there, and so we're wanting to meet that target for sure. And the other thing that, from an audience standpoint, if you view, there's a property that we're trying to market, I'm interested in people who want to ski at Monarch and they live in Chicago, and so they're going to be in there, but I also want to give them provisions to do Airbnb and some of those things. And so, I don't know that there are going to be a true rental market, but it's just flexibility so the owner can, you know, keep raising money as opposed to just have an outlay and they're only in it for one month, things like that. Again, it's to give them the ability. So, there are people that have approached me that have an interest in renting, but we're trying to make this pretty nice property. And so, we're wanting this to, I'm being careful with my words here, we want it to be nice. Let me say that.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for the applicant?
Thanks for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you for the...
Mr. Chairman, before you open this up for public hearing, for any public comment, I noticed I don't have a Page Six in my agenda packet either, so I apologize, I'm not sure how that error happened, but if you'd like, I can run upstairs and print copies of Page Six for everyone while you're asking the public if they have any comments, and if not, if you could take a five-minute recess, I'd be more than happy to bring those back down here.
Okay, and Page Six would have findings of fact?
Would have findings of fact and the motion.
Recommendations, okay.
Okay.
Yeah, we probably should.
We should. Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Lund. Thank you, Mr. Lamone. Are there any comments from the audience? Yes, sir, come on up. Come to the, for the record, please, come to the podium, state your name and address, please.
My name is Joe Peter. I live at 511 Hazel, just right up the street from, from there. My only question is, is the city planning on widening the streets where there's going to be the off-street parking or on-street parking?
That is, Mr. Lamone may have an answer for that.
It's my understanding the city doesn't have any construction widening, road widening projects associated with the Scholastica property on any of the, on any of the adjacent roads. However, I can tell you that, especially on Seventh, where our diagonal parking is being introduced, it is in the same dimension from the curb as on-street parking. So, we don't encroach into the road any more than a car that's parking along the curb would take up. And you need to know also that both Sixth and Seventh are 60-foot curb-to-curb dimensions, so they're wide roads to begin with, with on-street parking on both sides.
I thought they were.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the audience? Okay, we're going to take a two-minute recess, waiting on Patrick to come back down.
Two minutes?
All right, five minutes. Let's give him five minutes.
He's down to two minutes.
He better run.
Yeah. Where's that page?
Yeah. Yeah. No, 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 don't. Chill freeze.
I don't want to use taxpayer money to cool us down.
Reopen the meeting, yes.
Okay, recess over. Call the meeting to order.
Dodgeball.
Were there any, was there any further discussion amongst commissioners on the presentation by either staff or the applicants? Our audience left, so I'm assuming no one else has any more questions. Okay, sorry, I got sidetracked. Hearing no additional comments, I now close this public hearing. Okay, so Patrick, walk us through this. First, we've got, first, I'm, okay, I'll get back to you, Patrick. I now call for a motion and a second request based upon findings of fact. Patrick just handed that information out to us.
Mr. Chairman, I have to go ahead and propose the findings of fact. The requested minor subdivision, subject to modifications as identified in the recommendation in section five above, is consistent with the criteria for subdivision proposals as expressed in Title 16 of the CCMC. Number two, adequate public notice as required by the Canyon City Municipal Code has been provided. And, number three, Planning Commission has conducted a public hearing on the proposed minor subdivision request, providing adequate opportunity to concerned citizens to speak in favor or against the proposed subdivision.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a second? I'll second that. Okay, any further discussion? Denise, please call roll.
Commissioner Randy Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Clark?
Aye.
Chairman Maloney?
Aye.
Commissioner Clement?
Aye.
Commissioner Shagley?
Aye.
Commissioner Brandon Smith?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. I now need a motion and a second for Planning Commission to recommend that the city council approve the scholastic minor subdivision request.
Yes, Chairman, I move that the Planning Commission recommend that the city council for the city of Canyon City approve Scholastica Minor Subdivision Request, five conditions contained in the staff's report.
Second.
Okay, the motion and a second. Denise, please call roll.
Commissioner Shagley?
Aye.
Commissioner Brandon Smith?
Aye.
Chairman Maloney?
Aye.
Commissioner Clark?
Aye.
Commissioner Clement?
Aye.
Commissioner Randy Smith?
Aye.
Okay, passes. This portion of the hearing is-
We also need the resolution. We need you to take a vote on the resolution as well.
Okay, a motion and a re, just a recommendation?
A, a, a motion and a second and a, a vote to forward to council on how Planning Commission feels about the resolution.
Okay, and you're talking pertaining to Planning Commission Resolution Number Three, Series of 2019?
No, this is the resolution authorizing a limited exception to the city's development standards pursuant to section 4.18 of the city's subdivision and development regulations. This is effectively exempting the development agreement. This, this is what we were speaking of during the public hearing earlier.
Right. There's no findings of fact, we're just approving the-
You're, you're just approving the resolution. The findings of fact was for the whole project.
Gotcha. So I need a motion and, and a second to approve the resolution.
I'll make a motion. I make a motion that we approve the resolution of the city of Canyon City, Colorado, authorizing a limited exception to the city's development standard pursuant to section 4.18 of the city's subdivision and development regulations.
I'll second that.
Okay, thank you. Only further discussion is our newest member was prepared. Denise, please call roll.
Commissioner Clement?
Aye.
Commissioner Clark?
Aye.
Chairman Maloney?
Aye.
Commissioner Shagley?
Aye.
Commissioner Brandon Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Randy Smith?
Aye. Okay, passes. Does that conclude that hearing, Patrick?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Lund and Mr. Lamone, for visiting us again.
Yes, thank you.
All right. Okay, that was a rough one. Get through. We didn't have all the information, Patrick.
I don't know where page six disappeared.
Yeah, it's crazy.
All right, let me get my papers square here. One second.
Trade and repair. Teamwork.
Gotcha. Item, item 4C. An ordinance of the city of Canyon City amending section 17 dot 08 dot 010C of the Canyon City Municipal Code concerning the definition of trade and repair shops. I'm assuming you will have something, you're representing the city on this?
I am representing the city on this. Although I will name drop Ryan Stevens, our acting city administrator and economic development director. He approached me some time ago about an idea that he had in, in the ability to potentially fill vacancies, not only, I mean, generally all over the city, but in particular along Main Street and some of the stores along Main Street. The idea is that we modify the definition of trade and repair shops to include artisanal type uses like glassblowing and woodworking. We, we had a consultation with the city attorney about this and city attorney felt this might be overkill, it might be redundant, but we wanted to make sure that the language in the definition was absolutely clear so that no one could question it. So we are bringing it forward to Planning Commission and asking that you would make a favorable recommendation about this change to council.
Okay. So, motion and a second to, or to recommend this change to-
We would like a motion and a second to recommend-
Can we discuss it first?
Yeah, let's, any discussion, please. Any questions of staff?
No discussion.
Discussion.
No discussion.
Just do it.
Patrick, downward says the staff has therefore proposed to amend the definition. There's gonna be a lot of these occupations, a lot of these artisanal skills. It says such as by a printer. And as I said, there's gonna be a lot more. Can we kind of renew the language to say but not limited to? To where it says such as by but not limited to a printer, electrician, jeweler? Because we've got weavers and quilters and computer repairs and I'm not trying to get everybody in there, but I want to make sure that we are not limiting ourselves to certain repairs. I mean, it even says appliance repairman. Does that mean home appliance or does that mean washing machines and refrigerators or? I'm just trying to get a, more of a succinct definition of kind of what kind of repairs and trades we're looking at.
We would assume under the common definition of the word appliance, it would be anything from a sewing machine on up to a full refrigerator, washer dryer, anything like that. Your language change about such as but not limited to, that is certainly an appropriate change if, if Planning Commission feels that it's a warranted change to make. And if that's what you want to do, I would suggest you include those words as part of your motion.
I, I kind of feel like though artisanal skills kind of covers that basis, but-
Artisanal skills is good, such as like I said, like a, a weaver or a jewel or something, but artisanal, artistic doesn't really apply to an appliance person, does it?
Which, which is why we made sure we added the language. The words that you see in red are the new words that we are proposing to add to include the artisanal skills.
That's why I said the woodworker, metalworker and all that, that's great. I just don't want to limit to those. Just, just me.
Now, Patrick, I just feel that the words such as is the same as IE, for example. It seems adequate enough to me.
And that's entirely a Planning Commission deliberation as to whether you think it's necessary to add any additional language to this.
Well, what do y'all think?
Well, I was just wondering that if an application was submitted for someone to do like say the glassblowing or the woodworking, I mean, would we actually deny them? I mean, do we really need to do this change?
Well, what would happen in these process, they're going into an existing building, a vacant space on Main Street. They wouldn't be coming to planning for approval of that. They would be going to get a building permit for any interior renovations that they needed to do and they would be going to get a business license through our, our finance department. In both cases, both of them come to me for a sign off that the zoning is acceptable. And I would, under this definition, say glassblowing is absolutely acceptable. Right now, the way it's written, we might be going out on a limb to say that it's acceptable, so we wanted to make it absolutely clear with this modification.
So you're trying to eliminate a step for this-
I don't know that we're eliminating a step, we're adding clarity to what the definition is intending.
Okay, got it.
Specific language versus vague.
Right, right.
Right, so you have skilled mechanical work, manual craft and artisanal skills, so I, I can see that.
I think it's very clear the way it's stated, would be to me, if I were.
With the change.
Pardon?
With the change.
Oh yeah, with the change, the such as, but not adding more words.
Correct.
Anything else? So do we have a modified motion? Is that what I'm hearing? Someone has one?
I think Commissioner Shagley likes it the way it is. Is that correct?
I do, so may I make a motion?
Absolutely.
Okay. Chairman, I move the Planning Commission recommend city council adopt the draft ordinance modifying the definition of trade and repair shop.
Second.
Okay, and we have a second. Denise, please call roll.
Commissioner Shagley?
Aye.
Commissioner Brandon Smith?
Aye.
Thank you.
Chairman Maloney?
Aye.
Commissioner Clark?
Aye.
Commissioner Clement?
Aye.
Commissioner Randy Smith?
I'm real close to saying no, but I'll say aye. I won't say no sometimes.
Was that an aye? Doesn't matter.
That's an aye, it's an aye.
Okay, thank you, everyone. For the Planning Commission Resolution Number Three, Series of 2019, a resolution of the Planning Commission of the city of Canyon City repealing Resolution, Resolution Number Two, Series of 2019, which approves certain amendments to the subdivision regulations concerning the subdivision final plat process and adopting new amendments to the final plat process. Do you have comments, Patrick?
I do. As the Planning Commission may recall, earlier this summer, there was a resolution brought to you as well as a draft ordinance that modified our processes for preliminary and final plat and preliminary and final PUD to make the final step in both cases administrative in nature. When the draft ordinance got to council, and you did in fact adopt Resolution Two, that, that made those changes to the preliminary and final plat process. When the draft ordinance got to council, there was some discussion about this and amending this so that the, any, any particular developer going through the preliminary and final plat or PUD process could have the choice of doing either the, the process as it's currently stated, where you would have to take the final through public hearings, or the abbreviated process where the final would be considered administrative in nature. Council opted to have that change made and they act, they asked that that change be incorporated into the, the preliminary and final plat process, which of course, as a subdivision regulation, is governed by our subdivision and development regulations, part of Title 16 that Planning Commission approves. So we've been asked to bring you this resolution, which will repeal Resolution Number Two, and put these provisions where there's a choice that the developer has back into it.
Okay, that makes sense. We've talked about this a little bit. Any questions for staff?
Well, I, I just have one. If I understood you correctly, Patrick, we're just updating our policy based on our previous finding.
Correct.
Okay.
Updating it to include the administration and the public forum, whereas before it was just public forum?
Well, originally it was just public forum. The change with Resolution Two made the final step, final plat process step administrative. And there was some concern about the, the vested rights under a different section of the code. So the decision was made, okay, we'll put this decision tree into this so that a developer can have the choice of going through the public hearing process or going through an administrative process. They simply let us know when they apply for the final, which one they want to do.
Okay.
And, so, so if I could, the, having been there for that discussion and hearing the city attorney opine on this, what, what we originally had was the full process, we changed it to administrative. But, that we, the city council and the Planning Commission, but the issue with just the administrative one is that as a developer, then you didn't get vested rights. It was not explicit that your rights vested immediately. And so, some developers may like that vested right provision. And so that's why the, we're coming back now and saying it's, it's either administrative or a full process. Full process, you get your full rights right away. Administrative, you have to wait a while.
Okay, timeframe then.
Anything else? Now I need a motion and a second to adopt the resolution.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Planning Commission adopt the Planning Commission's Resolution Number Three, Series of 2019.
I'll second that.
Okay, Denise, please call roll.
Commissioner Brandon Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Clark?
Aye.
Chairman Maloney?
Aye.
Commissioner Clement?
Aye.
Commissioner Shagley?
Aye.
Commissioner Randy Smith?
Aye.
All right. Thank you. Item five. So, it's been a while since I asked you this, a couple of months ago, how we handle this, so it's time to nominate chair and vice chair for the next year. This is done yearly, is that correct, Denise?
We, we do this annually. Planning Commission terms always expire on the 30th of June. So when your fiscal year, for lack of a better way of describing it, begins in July, it's always important to elect a chair and vice chair. So that, that's entirely up to you as to who you want to nominate and, and vote. We provided you with some paper to write down ballot names if, if we've got more than one person contending for a chair or vice chair position.
Okay, so I guess the way it would work is if anyone wanted to step up and volunteer or if anyone wanted to nominate someone, we would have those names for chair and vice chair. And then we would all vote anonymously. So I would ask for any volunteers or nominations for, currently I'm chair and Commissioner Clark is vice chair. That's the current situation.
That is the current situation, yes.
Okay. Okay, so it's open to nominations and/or volunteers?
I would volunteer for either position, chairman or vice, whichever.
So we've got Chairman Smith?
I'm way down here, I want to be up near the front.
That's what you were testing.
Make sure you put R. Smith.
R. Smith. Randy Smith, okay. Any other nominations or?
I'll volunteer to be vice chairman again.
Okay. Commissioner Clark, be vice chair?
Are you interested in remaining chairman?
Well, I've been, I've been doing this, I've kind of took over, a, a, I took over a term and then I skipped a term. So I've been here for a while. I mean, as chairman, I, I don't mind doing it, but if someone else is interested in doing it, I'd, I'd be happy to let them step up and do it. I mean, I'll throw my name in there as either position, vice chair or chair. And then, anybody else interested? No, no one else?
Commissioner Clement, are you interested?
Pardon me?
I said, are you interested? You just got here tonight, so-
Not at the moment.
Oh, okay.
So then everyone on your ballot, write down your nomination for chairman and nomination for vice chair. And we'll hand them all to Denise and she'll count them up and is that, is that the process?
That would be the process, yes.
Actually vote rather than nomination. You vote for it.
Your vote, yes, your vote.
While she is counting the ballots, the next item on your agenda, I have included in your agenda packet the 2020 meeting date calendar. We're getting to the part of the year where people who are doing their advanced planning for potentially submitting applications to get to hearing dates are running out of calendar year 2019. So that'd be best to put the, the 2020 calendar together for you. Put it past you, make sure that you are amenable to these dates, if those look good to you.
Did everyone look at the calendar? Anyone have any concerns about the dates? Do we need to vote to adopt the calendar?
I think, you know, thumbs up or thumbs down, we'll be just fine.
Did you have a change for the November, I, I was walking over there. Did you have a change for this next November meeting?
I was going to ask you all about that. As it happens, your November meeting coming up this year will happen on the Wednesday before Thanksgiving and I suspect if we kept it on that date, getting a quorum may be a little difficult. So I was going to ask if Planning Commission would be amenable to moving that forward a week to Wednesday, November 20th?
I would appreciate that. I wouldn't be on vacation. Oh, wait a minute, sorry, it's November. No, I will be here for that, sorry.
I'm okay with it. Do we have any items for that meeting yet?
Depending upon what happens, the filing deadline for projects to go to that November hearing is next Friday, the first Friday in October. And I have been having conversations with one potential applicant about meeting that deadline for a rezoning request. So you may have items going to the November Planning Commission.
Okay. I'm okay with it, that one changed the this year's calendar. Everyone okay with that?
For the 20th?
Yeah.
And that, that will for the record be your final meeting for 2019, since obviously December, your December date would be the 25th.
So we would just not have a meeting in December?
Yeah, unless something urgent comes up and we have to schedule a special meeting.
Okay. Okay, well, if everyone gives a thumb up, thumbs up, we'll adopt that, the calendar and the change to the November meeting. All right.
It looks unanimous to me.
Okay. Was that the last item? Oh, we have a joint Planning Commission and city council meeting on October 9th at 6 o'clock. Does everyone think they're gonna come to that, maybe?
Six, yes. Is that one Riverfront?
That would be more on the Riverfront zoning, yes. Dina has been, she's expressed interest in making sure she has a number of these workshops with both Planning Commission and council before we begin going formally to public hearings for adoption of the ordinance.
It's great.
Okay, as soon as we tally our votes, then we'll be adjourned. Well, we'll talk, whatever.
I have to let you know I will be here for the 23rd.
Okay, okay. What's the 23rd of?
Our normal meeting.
Oh, is that our next scheduled meeting?
Been a long night, huh?
Do we need to recast our votes?
Okay, going through, hang on, hang on guys.
Are you on pins and needles?
I'm on pins and needles. She made a chance.
Oh, there will be a chance here. So you're on the scoreboard?
No, I'm the executive director of most of the issues, and so we have yeah, it's always the second Wednesday of the month.
Your card, because you're doing it down here below.
I was doing dates in my head.
I was saying, I'm leaving all this for him.
Well, that's kind of what I thought. Except for very last-
I've got a shredder at work that never fill that bin and that guy comes in and-
Seriously? I will bring you, I will bring you barber shop stuff.
It's not one of the big trash cans, it's a smaller one, but it's still this tall. This tall. So if you have stuff you need to shred, just come in.
I always do. It doesn't matter.
I would just-
I'll give it to Patrick.
Yeah, now this helps.
Can I bring my stuff from the house?
Yeah. No, I'm not kidding.
I got a pretty good size for it.
Okay, we have a winner.
You gotta have two.
We have two winners. We have Jerry Maloney as chair.
Who is?
Jerry Maloney.
Jerry, congratulations, Jerry.
And then vice chair, we had a tie for Jerry Maloney and Randy Smith. And since you were since you were already chair, so then the vice chair goes to Randy Smith.
He could be both.
Yeah, and if I'm not here, we're, yeah. Okay, well, there we go.
Oh, yeah. So now you get to sit here. I get to be at the adult table.
Another year fun. All right.
Congratulations, guys.
Anything else from anyone? No? Okay, we're adjourned, thank you.